Like to welcome you to another edition of Meet Your Miramac Candidates. Where each show, we bring on either one of the six town council candidates, or one of the four school board candidates. And ask them some questions, so that we can all get to know them a little better. Today, I'm very happy to be joined by school board candidate Gary Krupp. Gary, thank you very much.
Thanks Dave, appreciate having me.
And for those of you who haven't seen any of the episodes earlier, what we try and do is ask non-political questions. We don't care about political philosophies, parties, issues, or anything else. We're trying to get to know the individual. There'll be a lot of shows on TV in the next few weeks, and a lot of articles in the newspapers, on the internet, that will give them all a chance to talk about their issues. But today, we want to find out about them. And with that being said Gary, let's go start right off with where did you grow up?
I grew up in a small town, Clough, Michigan. I say small, but about the size of Miramac, 25,000 people. It was, I lived in the corner of the school district, so I was out by a dairy farm and in the country. A great place to grow up as a kid, because you know, I rode motorcycles and ATVs and things like that, and so.
Yeah, now how long did you stay there Gary?
I was there right up through graduating high school, when I went off and got in the military. So, up until I was 18, or I guess, yeah, just after I turned 18.
Okay, you say it was a great place to grow up. If you could talk a little bit about how you spent your summers each year out there, what you guys and your friends did for fun?
Sure, yeah, so we tried to stay wet as much as we could. I had neighbors on both sides that had pools. One of them babysat us during the day, and so we would spend a lot of time swimming. Whenever we weren't doing that, we were water skiing. We had a boat, our whole family water skied. So we spent a lot of time in the lake, including two weeks, during when the GM plants would be shut down for model changeover. We would spend two weeks up on a lake camping out, just to water ski. And so it was great.
And was water skiing your sport of choice per se?
Yeah, it sure was. I did a lot of water skiing as a kid. I got pretty good at it. Got up to barefoot water ski at some, I guess as a teenager.
Okay, and was there anything else you were into? You do any team sports or any of that?
In high school, I was a wrestler. Actually, I started about, wrestling's pretty big in the Midwest, and it was really big in our town. So we had a pretty good feeder program that started kids out as young as fourth and fifth grade.
Oh really? Kinda like the NYA today.
It is, and we wrestled freestyle, which is more of Olympic style wrestling, until we got to the seventh grade, when collegiate, you know, there was wrestling within the school.
Yeah.
And so, when I got to high school, three of the years there, I wrestled varsity. One year I wrestled junior varsity.
Oh, great. And what weight class were you?
My senior year, I was a 135 pounder.
Really, huh?
Yeah, I weighed, I weighed, beginning of the season, I think I weighed 155, and I spent a lot of time cutting weight, running and spitting, you know, that kinda thing.
Yeah, oh yeah. Well, I'd like to talk a little bit about your parents now, and about some of the values they helped instill in you that have made you the man you are today.
Sure. My parents were both now retired auto workers. They worked for Buick plants in the Flint area. As a matter of fact, I have also, my dad has six brothers, and five of those are also retired GM employees. And my mother's three sisters are all retired GM employees. So I'm from a long line of auto workers.
Yeah, apparently so.
And my mother is, you know, what she instilled in me, she was a good, strong, she still is a good, strong Christian woman. She had us in church every Sunday. You know, she, I get credit her with, you know, giving me my faith in Christ. And so, no higher compliment I can pay to her than that. And my father's really a, just a jack of all trades, you know, he was, he's really great as a woodworker, as, working with cars, working with metal welding. And you know, I was expected to do all of those things when I was a kid, you know, like it or not.
Yeah, right.
I didn't realize how great it was, until you know, I grew up and had to do some of these things myself, and you know.
And you had, you had the skills.
I did have the skills, and that's, you know, I, although I can't imagine doing what he, you know, so, you know, I'm a 10 or 11 year old kid, welding with an oxy cetalene torch unsupervised. And I just can't imagine doing that with my own kit. But my dad grew up from a different generation, and you know, youth was not an excuse. You know, he taught me how to do things, how to do things safely, and.
And you never burnt the house down?
And I never burned anything down.
So he knew what he was doing.
Yeah, so, you know, he just taught me the value of good, hard work and doing a good job the first time, so.
Oh, great. As far as school, and we talked a little bit about wrestling, but in high school, what kind of student were you?
I was a pretty good student. I got As and Bs, graduated with honors. But I'd say that my teachers were right over the dozen or so years where they told my parents I wasn't applying myself. I coasted quite a bit, and probably didn't make the most of my opportunities. And I think that's probably why I ended up joining the military. You know, out of, high school, I was accepted to Michigan, to go to University of Michigan, for their accounting program. And nobody in my family had gone to college. It really wasn't a strong pull for me either way. And, and I just saw the cost of it, and thought it was ridiculous. So I decided to join the military for four years and figure out what I was gonna do. And then I ended up retiring 21 years later, but.
There you go. We'll catch that later in that show. As far as wrestling, were you involved in any other programs in high school?
I wasn't directly involved, but hockey's very big where I grew up. As a matter of fact, that's probably one of the greatest reasons I wrestled, because, you know, I was like a leper child, because I couldn't skate. Everyone played hockey. And so, whenever we weren't in wrestling practice or the meets, just about, the whole wrestling team would be at the IMA Sports Arena, watching our either high school hockey team, or that we had the Flint Spirits, which was a, kinda like a monarchs type team.
Yeah.
And so, we watched a lot of hockey.
So you were a big hockey fan though?
Yeah, sure. And so now, since I moved out here, I've adopted UNH. You know, my, my wife, all her siblings, all her family, all UNH alums. So I just love to be in a part of the country that appreciates hockey again, so.
Yeah, I know when you and Mike Malzone run into each other, he's an avid college hockey.
He's a BU guy too.
Yeah, 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 he likes that, so. I know you two kinda go at each other a little bit.
We didn't have much to go at him with this year. UNH had a rough year.
Yeah. Growing up, your fondest memory?
I think that's, I think that'd have to be getting my car. So, I had an uncle who fixed up cars, yeah, fixed up cars and sold them. He wasn't a dealer or anything. But it was, it wasn't uncommon for him to bring over a particularly vexing problem for my dad to help out with. And so, I worked on this car with my dad for about two months for my Uncle Dave. And didn't think twice about it, you know, it was not that unusual. And then, it was leading up to Christmas, we had a heated garage. And so, coming up to Christmas, my last present was, I was told, was out in the garage. And so we went out there and a big plastered sign across the front of it.
Parents mess with their kids.
Yeah, and it was, it was my gift, and it was a 1968 Gran Torino, a nice car. And so, I had helped fix it for two months, and it was mine all along.
Oh, there you go, geez, and talk about coincidence. The Torino in Michigan, and Clint Eastwood's movie there?
That's right.
Yeah, I loved, I'm sorry, they stopped making that car. I loved the Torino. One of my best friends had one of them growing up.
It was a good looking car. It cost me some maintenance, you know. The guy who owned it before me wasn't kind to her. So, so I spent a good bit of time under the hood, learning about how the thing worked.
Oh, that's great. So, you graduate high school, you looked at Michigan, you got accepted to Michigan, and you decided to go in the service?
I did.
What service did you pick, and tell us a little bit about it?
I picked the Air Force. I actually went and talked to all four recruiters. As a matter of fact, the Marine recruiter's quite tenacious, even while I was in basic training for the Air Force. He was still calling my mother, to see if, but I had very good ASVAB score, so I could get a, just about any job that I wanted. And, and so I joined the military, and, and ended up as a supply technician, and.
And when you went in, what was, how long do you think you were gonna be in there for?
I really thought I was gonna be in there for four years, and then I would come out and figure out what I was gonna do with my life.
Yeah.
It just, life took a couple of other turns for us.
Tell us a little bit about your experience in the military, some of the places you served. Anyone that's looked at your website can't help but see the picture of you and General Petraeus.
Right, yeah, that was actually, since I was stationed here, out at Hanscom. I was deployed, actually on four days' notice. So Monday they called me, and Friday I left. And so it was a little bit sudden, but.
And you left for where?
I left for Iraq. Well, actually, I left for Texas first, for training, and then from Texas. I stayed in Texas just long enough to watch the Pats lose to the Giants, and then went out of country to Iraq. And so while I was there, I worked in the Joint Operations Center in Baghdad.
And I hate to say, but it was the first time they lost to the Giants.
It was.
Right, yeah. I hate that it was two times, but, so that was back three, four years ago.
That was, and then, so I joined as an enlisted guy. I was an airman basic in E1.
Yeah.
Worked several jobs. I started out at Hill Air Force Base. I went overseas and lived in England for a couple of years, which was great. And then during the Clinton years, the drawdown, a lot of those bases were closed, and ours was one of those, and so I came back to Mississippi. And so while I was out in Mississippi, I started to take some night classes at the prompting of my then-wife, that said, "Hey, do something with your life besides this crummy enlisted pay." So, so I took some classes at night, and I realized that, "Hey, I'm still pretty good at this. This wasn't so hard at all." And you know, one thing led to another. I started taking intensive classes, so I could double up at night, you know, get more credits in a semester.
And how old were you then Gary, if you don't mind me asking?
I was about, let's see, I would've been about 20, 21, just turned 21.
When you started taking the classes?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. So it was early into, in your time there then?
That's right, you know, so I had, we got to Columbus, you know, so I was at Hill for a very short time. And then I was at Bentwaters, which was in England, and then the base closed. And I went back to Columbus, and technically, that was before my first term was up. So I moved quite a bit right at the beginning.
Yeah.
And then I stayed in Columbus for seven years. And that was because I got accepted, I took enough classes that I got accepted to a competitive program to get a commission and to go to school full-time. And so that was pretty good. At that time, the economy was great. They had trouble getting enough electrical engineers to come into the service. And so there was, I mean, I think around 40% was the Manning that they had at that time. And they had a program that funded 35 people a year to go to school full-time for two years. If you could finish your degree in two years, which I could, I got picked up, and I went to Mississippi State. I stopped going to work. My full-time job was to go to school. It was great.
Now, how many years were you in there before you got commissioned?
About 10 years. I went over just about the 10-year point.
Oh really? So you did 10 years as?
10 years as an enlisted guy.
And then 10 years as?
10 years as an officer, that's right.
Which is better?
You know, it's quite interesting. So it depends on what rank you are, I can tell you that. I know that as an airman, or even an airman basic, I was treated better than, in some cases, as a second lieutenant.
Well, yeah, I was never in the service, but you always hear those second Louis jobs.
Oh yeah, so every, you know, yeah, nobody recognizes that you already have 10, 11 years of service, and you know, they think you're like everyone else.
A 90-day wonder.
Exactly, so, so in that sense, you know, I guess once I was a senior captain or a major, you know, at least all the sniggering was behind my back, I guess.
Yeah. And are you officially retired?
I am. I retired in 2010. And that's required. You're not allowed to hold elected office while you're active duty. And so, I couldn't, I couldn't be active duty and seek office.
Okay, and how long were you over in Iraq?
I was only there six months, just a little over six months. So I went down for training in Texas for about a month. Turned out to be a total of about seven and a half months away from home. And it was 2008, I don't know if you remember, that was one of these record snowfall winters. And so my wife was out there manhandling my monster snowblower, that I actually helped build. And she got to have all the fun. I don't know, I think she saw it as quite so much fun.
Yeah, probably not. Do you have any particular memories of your time in Iraq?
I do, you know, I thought it was, you know, at that time, I was, in my Bible study, I was reading Daniel a lot. And Daniel, and, and part of his visions, he's standing on the Tigris and Euphrates River valleys, and looking out, having these visions. And it's amazing when I think that I'm in this place so close to something that's existed since biblical time. And that just really, you know, blew me away.
Yeah, that, that's what I find interesting about the whole, the parts of the world, is here, it's 200, 250 years old, tops. You go out there, and like you say, it's the Bible and all kinds of other stuff.
Yeah, the first house we looked at when we were in England was 450 years old. It had a thatch roof. You know, it's older than the country, older than the United States, you know, that was.
Wow, that, geez.
And I thought, is this all we can afford? It had a fireplace in every room, you know, it was a little, yeah, I was worried. I think the other than that, in Iraq, being at headquarters had some advantages in that we all, you know, there's not a lot of places to eat. Everybody eats in a dining facility, and so I bumped.
Where were you in Iraq? We used to work in Iraq, but where?
I was in Baghdad.
Oh, okay.
I was in.
And were you at the headquarters?
The headquarters, right. So General Petraeus was in, you know, the next office.
Oh really? I didn't know, I didn't know if that was just a photo op. So you, you worked with General Petraeus?
Yeah, so, so we were part of his morning briefing every day, and, and the evening briefing went to General Austin, which was his corps commander. And so, yeah, I prepared briefings for both of them.
Wow. So again, this wasn't just a photo op. You, you were six months?
It wasn't, it wasn't a photo op, but you're not.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is it just like, could be a photo op, I could get my picture taken with George Bush, but that's all it would be.
Right.
You were actually working with General Petraeus.
Yeah, I literally bumped into him coming out of the bathroom one day, about ran him over. I thought his security team was gonna jump me.
So you did your 20-plus years, and you're out. Now, if you could talk about, a little bit about your wife, how you met your wife?
Okay, so, so like I said, I've been married twice. My first wife and I were high school sweethearts. I married, I was 19, she was 20. We had nine good years together. We had two great kids, which I obviously still have. And, you know, I think, like a lot of people who marry that young, you know, kinda grew apart. We were immature at 19, really didn't even know what we were yet, let alone, you know, what we, what we wanted out of life.
Right.
And so for us, we didn't grow together, we grew apart a bit. So that, thankfully, ended amicably. We still talk weekly.
Yeah.
And so then I met my, shortly after getting my commission, I went to Wright Patterson Air Force Base, where I worked at the National.
And where was that?
That's in Ohio, in Dayton, Ohio. And I met my, my wife at the National Air Intelligence Center. I was an intelligence analyst there. She was also an electrical engineer that worked in the shop.
So just, I mean, not to get off base there, so you and Tom Mahon was our first guest on the show.
Yeah, I know.
And he was an intelligence analyst. What a small world.
It's crazy, isn't it?
Yeah.
I did notice that when I watched the show.
Gosh, geez, I didn't realize that the people in Miramac had so much to do with my safety. But anyways, I digress.
Oh, so she was, you know, she was a contractor actually, at that time, in the office, and an expert user of some of the software that we, that we, that we use to predict radar, radar returns. And so I was a new guy, and anybody who's been around me much at all knows I'm inquisitive. I ask a lot of questions. And, you know, she was really the only one that seemed to have time to answer most of them. So, in a way, she really trained me at my first job as an officer, you know, as a second lieutenant. So, wasn't interested dating, you know, I was, you know, fresh off a divorce. She was dating another guy anyway. But you know, about a year later, circumstances presented themselves, and we began to date. And, you know, one thing led to another, and I just thought, you know, wow, this is, this is the one. And, you know, I'm worried about this, because, you know, I've got this complicated situation. I've been married before, and, and, you know, she just put me at ease about all of that. And we've, you know, here we are almost 10 years later, and two more boys. So I've got four boys total.
Yeah, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about your kids? I know you're like all parents, you're a very proud, proud parent, but if you could talk a little bit about them?
Sure, sure. So my oldest is Kyle. He's a 17-year-old junior here at Miramac High. He's into soccer, and all the things young boys are. He just took a truckload of kids up to watch the Division One Championship basketball game, and so they were all decked out in blue, and they, you know, they had a great time.
Oh yeah, you always, always good when you win.
And so now we're, you know, pouring through things for college paperwork, and this and that and the other, I'm realizing that he's grown a lot faster than his college savings account has.
And is he, is he living with you in Miramac?
He lives here, yep.
Okay.
And then I have Nicholas is my 13-year-old. He'll actually be 14 here pretty quick. He, he's a middle schooler. He actually lives with his mom in Michigan. Goes to a school in Rockford, which is over by Grand Rapids. And he's our little mechanical guy. He's really good with building things with wood, and flying helicopters, little remote control helicopters, things like that. So he's our gadget guy. Then we have Daniel, who's our second grader. He's kind of the brainiac of the bunch. He's into piano and a bunch of other things, and, and just generally, we try to keep his ego in check.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the baby Mitchell is a kindergartner now at Miramac PTA, but he'll be in first grade next year at Reed's. And so, like, like many, I think he's my last hope for a wrestler. He's into gymnastics and wrestling around, and so we're thinking that NYA is in his future.
Oh, great. Well, also, you've got them ranging all different ages there.
Oh yeah, we run the gamut.
Well, if somebody was to come up to you tomorrow, a new parent, and just say, "Gary, if you could give me one bit of advice raising my kids," what would that be?
In my opinion, it'd be routine, you know, especially when they're young. The quicker and the earlier you establish a routine, you know, just the easier life is for everyone involved. I know that I've, I've been very thankful that all four of the boys slept through the night pretty early as babies, you know, what, they weren't very tough, as far as getting down to bed, and all went to bed on their own. And so those kind of routines leave some sanity for mom and dad. You know, it's amazing how much brighter and loving you can be when you're rested. So rest is good, and routine helps get rest.
There you go. You had mentioned you just retired from the service, basically a little over a year ago. So my question, so this is, I won't say it's not a fair question, because everything's fair, but as far as your time in the, where, how have you been involved in the community so far? And I preface that by saying you, it's been difficult, it's tough to, to coach a NYA game when you're, when you're sitting at the table with General Petraeus in Baghdad. But anyways, how have you found a way to get involved so far, Gary?
Sure. So I, since we moved to town, we, we attend church at Miramac Valley Baptist Church. And so I'm active in the church there as well. There's a Wednesday night program that's called Awana's, and the threes and fours program is called the Cubbies Program. And that's something for the last four or five years I've volunteered for, and I'm the director of that program now. And, you know, beyond that, I've been on the budget committee for the last year. Spent a good bit of time before we ever actually had our true meeting sessions, studying the budget, making that available to anybody who was interested to download it off the website, so that people could learn more about this complex thing that is the school budget, and.
Right.
And so I, you know, as far as community involvement, I guess that's probably about it for Miramac.
Okay, and aside from community involvement and raising a family, what do you do for hobbies?
We still like to get on the boat just as often as we can. We're, you know, we have a small bayliner outboard. And in the summertime, the weather's good, we try to get up to Silver Lake, which is in Harrisville. It's right in the shadow of the north side of Monadnock. It's a beautiful lake.
Yeah.
And so we'll throw the anchor and swim off for the day, or pull the kids around on a tube. Or if I feel, you know, up to it, I might even ride the ski for a little bit.
Oh really? And do your kids water ski at all?
They don't water ski so much as to do the tube. We haven't got the ski in part down yet, but they're content with doing the tubes, and they have a good time.
Oh, great. Well, we'll come into our final question of our first segment, and it's, could you describe a typical Saturday for me?
Sure, yeah, I, like a lot of folks, you know, right around 8 o'clock, I try to, to be there at the open gate for the transfer station, and I load up everything and get that taken care of right first thing. And then, if I have a couple of chores to run while everyone else is getting around in the house, you know, I'll do some things down in the workshop or whatnot. And then, if it's good weather, and it's summer, we're usually packing up the boat to get it ready to go out, or calling my mother-in-law and father-in-law. Mum and dad live in Milford, and they also have a boat, so a lot of times we go boating together. And, and so usually, it's, if it's summertime, it's getting the boat together, getting all the life jackets loaded up, you know, fully gassed, the whole nine yards.
Yeah, well, I, I said that was the last question, but I guess I lied. Because I, you just answering that question reminded me I missed a question, and I have a feeling it's part of the answer. But the question was, how did you guys end up in Miramac?
Oh, sure, the, so, we were coming to the close of my career. I think I was about 16 or 17-year point. We knew that as the kids were getting older, moving around was tougher on them. And so we'd like to find a place that we could, you know, plant some roots. And thinking was, we'd like to be around family, whether that was Michigan or New Hampshire. My wife is, is from Milford. And so, she's an electrical engineer like I am, and, and we did a survey of the job market. And, you know, frankly, for our specialties, which is radar, the northeast was a lot better place, economy-wise, to live. And so, we were fortunate in that, when I graduated from my master's program, we got assignments. Classmate of mine got an assignment up to Hanscom, and was hoping to go out west. I had an assignment out west, and so we just made a swap. And we decided, when we moved out to Hanscom, that we would buy the place we were gonna stay in, up here in New Hampshire, wherever that might be. And my sister-in-law happens to live in Miramac. She did a lot of the, while we were still in Ohio, she was running around the houses for us. And so she actually found the house that we live in. So that's how we ended up in Miramac, is a great commuting location, and a place that once I, you know, retired, that we could stay.
Yeah, and your wife's parents are right down the road.
Exactly, just down 101, so it's a piece of cake.
Oh, great. All right, well, the next part of the show I like to call the lightning round. And basically, it's some short questions, looking for short answers, to try and get a little bit of a feel of how your tastes run.
Okay.
And we'll start off with, again, you've, you're one of those guys that's always one step ahead. But you've, you've already answered this question, but we'll do it again, because we like it.
Okay.
How was your first car?
My first car was a 1968 Ford Gran Torino.
And how long did you have that for?
I had that car, I guess, about three or four years, until I, you know, couldn't afford to put gas in it anymore.
The current car you drive today?
I rescued an 04 Cadillac off the lot. Had over 100,000 miles on it. Nobody wanted to buy the thing, so I took a chance on her, and she's been good for me for the last couple of years.
Oh, great. Your favorite TV show growing up?
I guess if, when I was really young, I liked Dukes of Hazzard. I got a little older, probably more like 18.
Yeah. And now, your favorite TV show?
That's a tougher one. I don't watch a lot of TV, but if I had to pick one, it'd probably be House. Yeah, I catch a show with House with my wife on occasion. It's a pretty good show.
Yeah, I like his personality. People say, people say I have a personality very similar to House. Favorite book you ever read?
Favorite book, I'd have to say, is actually a classic. I remember kinda getting hooked on some of these books at the library, and Be Great Expectations. You know, that's a pretty cool story.
Charles Dickens?
Yeah, so, so the, I got that, and The Great Gatsby, and a couple of others that I actually got from the library over here to make my commutes go a little bit better. And that story really, I've listened to it a couple of times, it's pretty good.
The last book you read?
It's a story called Bringing Up Geeks. And it's, it stands for Genuine Empowered Something Kids. But essentially, you know, allowing kids to, to, the whole idea behind the book was allowing kids to, to become who they are, rather than who we'd like them to be. And just providing an environment that it's safe to be a little nerdy, you know, eccentric, whatever, to allow them to explore and find things.
Sounds like a little of the mainstream approach to Lady Gaga.
I don't think it's quite that word. I mean, she, she, this lady definitely has strict rules, and, you know, like the kids weren't allowed to have texting until they were older, and things like that. And, and her whole thing was to, you know, protect their innocence for as long as you can.
Okay, first job you had?
I worked at Burger King. You know, I did the opening shift. I did a lot of, we were a brand-new store, so I did a lot of putting out the Whopper Bouncy House and stuff like that.
And the current job you have today?
I'm a system engineer. I work down at a company called MITRE. It's in Burlington, Mass. And so, kind of a brains-for-hire for the government.
Yeah, now, is that the one, is that right near Hanscom?
It is, yeah. It's right off of, right off of Route 3 there on 62.
So you haven't changed your commute hardly at all?
I don't have to go through the gate anymore, but that's about it. You're right.
You dress differently maybe.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, favorite athlete growing up?
Uh, it's probably not somebody you'd know. It's, it's a guy named Mike Siple, who was a professional barefoot water skier. He's kinda one of my idols. As I was growing up, I said I was pretty big into water skiing and, and I remember getting his autograph. I still actually have the magazine where he autographed for me. That was a pretty big deal.
Oh, wow. Yeah, you, you, you were right. I never heard of him.
Yeah, there was a guy, Mike Siple, and, and there was another guy, Ron Scarpan. They were kinda at the forefront of that, that sport at the time. And so I followed them both pretty close.
Uh, favorite athlete now?
Favorite athlete now, I tell you, I hope it's Mario Williams. I'm a Bills fan and, and, uh, if we could use any, all the help we can get.
How'd you become a Bills fan, if you don't mind me asking? I, I haven't heard much about, uh, Buffalo when we've been talking about your transgression. I mean, you're trying to think, transgression's the word. Well, as you've moved through the country and your life, I haven't heard Buffalo come up yet.
Well, um, uh, my first wife, um, her in-laws are Canadian. They're all from Welland, Ontario. And I grew up, we didn't watch sports at all in my house. My dad was not a big sports fan. And, uh, so I didn't start watching football till after I had left the house and, and, uh, these in-laws got me hooked on. They were all Buffalo fans. They were from Welland, Ontario, so.
Now, who was back then was, uh, OJ was before your time, so what was it, was, uh?
It was still Jim Kelly, yeah, right, yeah, and Bruce Smith.
The four Super Bowls they lost.
That's right. We've been in purgatory ever since.
So you think Mario could do good things?
I think that he could at least help with Brady.
There you go. Um, favorite, uh, musical group growing up, musical artist?
Um, definitely would be Van Halen. You know, I was, uh, went to a couple of their concerts. You know, Van Halen would. Actually, I still like them. They've actually just come out with a new album, but, uh, they would've been my favorite as a kid.
And your favorite now?
Uh, if I had to pick one, probably Third Day. It's a Christian rock group band. It's really good.
Okay, favorite movie?
Favorite movie, that was an easy one. A Few Good Men. I've watched, I watched a videotape of it so many times and the videotape wore out. My wife had to buy me the DVD. Yeah, I liked that movie.
And the last movie you've seen in the theater?
Uh, it's Denzel Washington, um, I think it was Safe House, I think is what it was called.
Okay, all right, well, that was our lightning round. Uh, that went fairly quick. And now we've come to the point where I wanna talk a little bit about your goals and, and, uh, what you're hoping to accomplish, uh, with the rest of your life.
Sure, uh, my immediate goals are really just to, to see, uh, each of my boys get off on whatever path that, that, that they're gonna go on. Get them off through college, finish up with college, um, into their careers and, and let them each start their lives, help out in any way that I can. Um, and, and just let them benefit from my experience, you know, having kinda gone the long road. I went through the military and I've been to community college and a liberal arts college and a state college and. And so I've been through a lot of different avenues that are available to these guys and, and so. I'm hoping they can benefit from my experience and maybe shorten that road a little bit.
Do you have any, now, as being someone in the service twenty years, you've obviously traveled around the world. But do you have any places that you'd like to maybe see with your family or your wife?
Definitely, I would like to, um, like to go to Israel, would love to go to Greece. Um, either of those would be great. Uh, we've been to Germany, but I'd like to go some other areas in Germany. Uh, that's where my family heritage is, so that'd be kinda neat.
And, uh, where do you look to retire?
Right here. Well, I'm retired once, so I'm just waiting for the retire again. I still work awful hard for being retired, but, uh, no, I, uh, I, I, I plan to retire here. I mean, um. I guess if all things were perfect, maybe, um, you know, the lake that I mentioned, Silver Lake.
Yeah.
If a place opened up and I, you know, won the lottery or something, I wouldn't mind living on a lake to, to go down to the dock to start up the boat. That'd be nice. But, uh, my guess is that's probably not gonna happen. I'll probably stay right here.
Okay, well, the final question is, uh, when the trek is done. And, uh, everyone's sitting around at the, uh, whether it be at the VFW or in your kitchen. Or at the local, uh, restaurant and they're talking about you. How would you like to be remembered by your friends and family?
Um, I think as a, somebody who's genuine, somebody who, you know, uh, a genuine person that was honest and forthright. A good Christian father, um, good influence on his kids, that kind of person. I mean, that would be the ultimate compliment in my opinion.
Great. Well, I'll tell you, Gary, I feel like I've gotten to know you so much more just in the last two or three days. Uh, you know, seeing the pictures you sent in and, uh, just had no idea you were a wrestler and. You know, I, I knew you were, I knew you had served in the service, didn't know you were in Baghdad, didn't know you were in headquarters and, uh. Jeez, uh, there's a, there's a lot to you, to me c'est moi. Is, uh, and again, I've enjoyed it with all the guests, but, uh, it's been, it's very enjoyable to know the person behind the candidate. Cause you know, a lot of us were gonna drive down and we're gonna see the fancy signs on the road and that's all we're gonna know. And I, I feel after talking to you for the better part of forty-five minutes that we have, understand a little bit more about the man. And I appreciate you showing up today. Thank you. And again, your name will be on the ballot on April tenth, running for school board and good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you, Gary. Bye-bye.